Good morning. Welcome to this regularly scheduled meeting of the Minneapolis City Council. My name is Barb Johnson and I am President of the Minneapolis City Council. And frequently before our meetings, we have the pleasure of recognizing extraordinary activities in the community and extraordinary individuals who have worked in our community. And so we have three of these today. So I'm going to start with Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to ask Teresa and Erin to join me. So this morning, we have a resolution honoring World AIDS Day. And many of you might know World AIDS Day is on December 1st. And we're very excited to have the I-35 Bridge lit for this occasion. And we have a resolution that I'd like to read and ask them to say a few words about their organization, which is the Red Ribbon Ride. I'll note that my father has done the Red Ribbon Ride, and he's 72-years-old, twice. So this says something about people's passion for biking and combining that passion for biking with doing good and social justice. So I'm really happy that you guys run an organization that even someone like my dad can participate in. So recognizing World AIDS Day in Minneapolis. Whereas the Red Ribbon Ride, in conjunction with World AIDS Day, works directly to raise awareness and recognize individuals who are living with HIV/AIDS or who have passed away from this terrible disease. And whereas World AIDS Day is held on December 1st each year and is an opportunity for people worldwide to unite in the fight against HIV, show support for people living with HIV, and to commemorate people who have died. And whereas World AIDS Day was the first-ever global health day, and the first one was held in 1988 by the World Health Organization and is recognized by the HIV/AIDS service organizations in Minneapolis. And whereas the Red Ribbon Ride is a four-day, 300-mile charity bike ride to support eight Minnesota HIV/AIDS service organizations. The ride is in its 13th year of traveling across Minnesota. And whereas nearly 33 million people in the world are currently living with HIV/AIDS, more than 25 million people have died of AIDS worldwide since 1981. And whereas, according to the CDC, more than 1.1 million in the United States are living with HIV right now, nearly 1 in 6, 15%, are unaware of their infection. And whereas there are over 7,500 people known to be living with HIV/AIDS in Minnesota, in 2013, there were 301 new cases of HIV reported in Minnesota, which represents a 4% decrease from 2012. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Minneapolis that the City Council declares the first day of December 2014 to be World AIDS Day in the City of Minneapolis and that the I-35 Bridge be lit red in honor of this day. And I'd like to offer the microphone to our friends just to speak briefly about this milestone.
Well, thank you for the opportunity. As Lisa mentioned, anyone can participate. The Red Ribbon Ride is July 16 through the 19th, 2015, and we have eight amazing AIDS service organizations who benefit. So we welcome your participation and your support at redribbonride.org. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for being here today. Thank you.
Congratulations. Thank you. All right, I think we'll do Restorative Justice next. Councilmember Andrew Johnson is going to join me. And we're going to honor the folks from Restorative Justice. Councilmember Johnson.
Thank you, Madam President. And today, we are joined by providers of restorative justice. Have you come over this way? Who are working throughout our city on this topic. So for those not familiar with restorative justice, it really is the premises that when a crime occurs, that it hurts the victim, it hurts the offender, and it hurts the community and increases an obligation to make things right. And what restorative justice does is a non-punitive, non-adversarial role where it really brings people together and it helps resolve and create a solution for that problem and really give back to the community. And I think, when I think about restorative justice, I think about a statistic that I like to share, that in San Francisco County Jail, when they implemented a restorative justice program in their jail, the in-jail violence rate virtually was eliminated and the reoffense rate for violent crimes dropped by over 90%. And that has been independently verified in studies and such. But I also think about restorative justice as, more than just the crime aspect, it's about teaching skills for individuals resolving conflict and problems in their lives. I actually talked with a friend, and he said, "Well, restorative justice is great. It works well when somebody shoplifts. What about gun violence and crime in the community?" And if we think to what the root cause of that is, that individuals don't necessarily know how to resolve their problems, they don't know how to understand the impact in consequence of their actions and how it affects others, how it affects the community, and if they don't feel empowered with the tools to resolve their conflicts, then they turn to violent methods as well. So it's an incredible amount of work that is being done here. And we're happy today to declare Restorative Justice Week in the City of Minneapolis. And so we have today with us this honorary resolution, which I will now read. Oh, thank you. Whereas, restorative justice is a non-adversarial, non-retributive approach to justice that focuses on healing of victims, accountability and supportive offenders, and the involvement of citizens in creating healthier, safer communities. And whereas, restorative justice is a proven solution that results in lower recidivism rates among offenders, a lower cost to society for handling cases than the traditional criminal justice path, and ultimately leads to better outcomes across the city. And whereas, restorative justice practices offer immense value when used proactively to give young residents the skills to better communicate and resolve problems and conflicts, skills which can be used in relationships, jobs, school, among friends and family, and in many other situations. And whereas, restorative practices help build community and especially help young residents feel a part of society and see their importance, connection, and responsibility to those around them. And whereas, there are restorative justice organizations serving all 13 wards of Minneapolis providing services to hundreds of youth and adults each year. And whereas, the Minneapolis Police Department recognizes the importance and value of restorative justice and provides referrals to restorative justice organizations. And whereas, there are restorative practices being utilized by schools all across Minneapolis. And whereas, the City of Minneapolis is proud to support restorative justice and restorative practices, and several initiatives are currently underway to better utilize restorative practices so that the benefits can be realized in more cases. And whereas, Restorative Justice Week will take place in the Twin Cities metro area during the week of November 16 through November 22, giving residents an opportunity to learn about restorative programming in their communities. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Minneapolis that the City of Minneapolis recognizes the role restorative justice and restorative practices play in making our city more livable, resilient, and healthy. Be it further resolved that the City Council in the City of Minneapolis declares November 16 through 22, 2014, as Restorative Justice Week in the City of Minneapolis. And if anyone would like to speak from the group, we'd be happy.
I'm Cynthia Prosek, and I'm with Restorative Justice Community Action. We've been involved with the city since 1997. And the dedication of the community and the council members have helped this to get larger and spread. And really, we are just continuing to grow, and we thank the council members for recognizing this.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Sure. Sure.
Good morning. You may have noticed that we've been joined by guests from Kenya. And so I'd love to introduce my friend, Judge Lejune Lang, who's been extraordinarily dedicated to our sister-city relationship with Eldoret, Kenya. So she brought some guests here today, so please tell us about them.
Good morning. Thank you very much. We have members of the county assembly and the executive from Eldoret, Kenya. They have formed a new government, a county government, so they are representing West and Gishu County. And for the majority of our group today, it's their first time in Minneapolis to visit their sister-city. And we are honored that they would come in winter to look at government and have their various appointments. So we could ask Mr. Melly, who is the leader of the group, if you'd like, to come forward.
Thank you. My name's Philip Melly. I'm a member of the executive in charge of trade industrialization and enterprise development as well as tourism. We're proud to be here in our sister-city relationship that has been there for more than 10 years now and is getting stronger by the day. With me, I came with a team of members of the county assembly. I'll just ask them to stand so that we can organize them, and then they can sit where they are. Here's Mr. Lawoy, who is a leader. He's a leader of majority and a member of the county assembly of a ward called Muyben. Just right behind him is Mr. Koehch. He's a member of a county assembly representing a ward called Kipsomba in Eldoret. And here's Mr. Lamai. He's our deputy speaker, representing a ward called Kapsahos. And we came with a principal of a technical training college, one of the top technical training colleges in Kenya, and the best in East Africa, is Mr. Tarno and Mr. To. So we are here to learn the experiences and exchange more skills and try to move forward in this relationship. Thank you.
Thank you very much for joining us this morning, and we hope you have a great visit and great experiences. Good morning. I'm going to call this regularly scheduled meeting of the City Council to order. Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Kano.
Here.
Reich.
Here.
Bender.
Here.
Glidden is absent. Yang.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Quincy.
Here.
Worsami.
Present.
Goodman.
Present.
Fry.
Here.
Palmasano.
Here.
Gordon.
Here.
President Johnson.
Here.
There are 12 members present.
We have a quorum present. Councilmember Glidden is involved in activities with her Bush Fellowship, so she won't be joining us today. First item on the agenda then, I'm sorry, adoption of the agenda is in order. Any changes or additions to the agenda? Councilmember Quincy.
Move approval.
Okay. The agenda's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye. Aye. Oppose, that carries. Next, we have acceptance of the minutes of the regular meeting of October 31st, 2014.
Move acceptance.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye. Aye. Oppose, that carries. Next, we have referral petitions and communications and reports of the city officers to proper committees and departments.
Move referral.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye. Aye. Oppose, that carries. Next, we have the Committee of the Whole, and that report is going to be given by Councilmember Quincy.
Thank you, Madam President. The Committee of the Whole will bring forward three items today. The first is authorizing the execution of an amendment to the City of Minneapolis Minflex Plan to allow the annual limit on pre-tax contribution to the Health Flexible Spending Account to increase with any cost of living adjustments assigned by the Internal Revenue Service. The second item is the authorization execution of a preliminary memorandum of understanding between the City of Minneapolis and implementation partners, which will commit the city to specific roles and responsibilities as the lead applicant for the Promise Zones Initiative, as well as authorizing the proper city officials and staff to develop and submit a 2014 Promise Zone application. The third item is authorizing the execution of an amendment to the city's health reimbursement arrangement establishing a separate retiree-only plan. Like to move all three items, Committee of the Whole.
Councilmember Quincy has moved the Committee of the Whole report. Anyone want to pull anything off, any discussion on any of those items? Seeing none, clerk, call the roll.
Clerk Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Not voting on item two. Aye on the remainder.
Fry.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye on one and three, and abstain on item two.
There are 12 ayes on the report except for number two, which has 10 ayes and two abstentions.
Those items are approved. Next, we have the Community Development Regulatory Services Report. In that committee is chaired by Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Madam President. The Community Development Committee is bringing forward nine items for approval this morning. The most lengthy item is item number nine, which is a list of special assessment levies forwarded to the county for various issues and problems in the city that we need to assess properties for. The other items include item number seven, which is Code 42's expansion project in their current ward, Ward Three, as well as potential for them to be expanding further into Ward 10. These are million-dollar grants from the state of Minnesota that we're supporting. With that, I'll move items one through nine for approval this morning.
Councilmember Goodman has moved the Community Development and Regulatory Services Report. Anyone want to pull anything off or discussion on any of those items? Seeing none, clerk, call the roll.
Bender.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Fry.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That report is adopted. Next, we have the Health Environment and Community Engagement Committee Report, and that committee is chaired by Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you very much, Madam President. The Health Environment and Community Engagement Committee is bringing forward four items for consideration. The first is related to the Surly Brewing Company's application for on-sale liquor Class A license with Sunday sales. We are recommending approval. The second has to do with uncontracted neighborhood funds. There were three staff directions that the committee is bringing forward. One is to post the annual budget, annual report, and most recent financial review and bylaws for each neighborhood association on the city's website before the end of the year. The second direction is that going forward, each neighborhood association will provide city staff with updated annual budgets, annual reports, financial reviews, and bylaws. These documents will be made available on the city website within 30 days of receipt. And documents that have previously been posted for the past years are to remain on the city website for a period of time consistent with existing city data retention policies. The third staff direction is to direct staff to work with the city attorney's office to review the documents and determine how to frame the presentation of documents properly on the city website. The third item we're coming forward is authorizing an amendment to the contract with Minnesota Remodeling and Restoration Company for a no-cost extension through May 31st, 2015. And the final item is a Healthy Homes Service Grant, authorizing a contract with the Minnesota Department of Health to accept an estimated $10,000 to provide healthy home services in the Latino immigrant community. I will move all four items forward for approval.
Councilmember Gordon has moved the Health Environment and Community Engagement Report. Any discussion on any of those items? Councilmember Yang.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to pull item number two out, just to make a comment and then just to ask a question.
Okay. Go ahead.
You know, I mean, reading this and following it, I think it's a good move in the right direction to have neighborhood associations post their annual budgets, reports, and financial records and bylaws and anything of that nature. I'm just wondering, and maybe Councilmember Gordon can help answer this, you know, if we're asking neighborhood associations to do it, is that a mandate? And if it's a mandate, I mean, are there penalties for not reporting?
Councilmember Gordon.
So far, there aren't any penalties that have been set up, so I don't know that there's fines or any things, but I do think that this will be something that will be reviewed as we move forward with neighborhoods' approval for future funding, and it's a clear expectation. I will also note that a lot of these things are already being posted, in fact, almost all of them on the neighborhood association's websites, but many of them on the city website as well. So I don't think this is going to be a big stretch. And I think Councilmember Andrew Johnson may want to comment on this as well. I don't know if he signed in.
Councilmember Johnson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd just like to note that as part of our CPP funding requirements, as neighborhoods seek funding, they do need to provide these documents to the city so that the city already has these documents in their possessions. The neighborhoods will continue to provide these documents to the city if they continue to seek funding with the city.
Councilmember Yang.
Thank you, Madam President. And with regards to this posting of annual budgets and other things, I mean, have we directed it to go to a specific website or something of that nature, or is it still unclear at this point?
Councilmember Gordon.
I'm going to let Councilmember Johnson respond to that, as it was his staff direction, and I know that he talks to IT about this already.
Councilmember Johnson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. In the staff direction, we specifically said, on the specific webpage on the city's site for each neighborhood association, each neighborhood association does have an individual webpage for that, so their specific documents would be listed and living there.
Okay. Any further questions? Seeing none, clerk, call the roll.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Fry.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That report is adopted. Next, we have the Public Safety, Civil Rights, and Emergency Management Report. With that, committee's chair, Councilmember Yang.
Thank you, Madam President. Today, we have one item, and that's to authorize an extension of a contract with Corner House Interagency, Child Abuse Evaluation and Training Center for Forensic Interview Services of Children and Vulnerable Adults, extending by one year, increasing the contract amount to $155,607, and to authorize execution of documents necessary to effectuate the agreement. And I will move for approval of that item.
Councilmember Yang has moved the Public Safety, Civil Rights, and Emergency Management Report. Anyone want to discuss that item? Seeing none, clerk, call the roll.
Aye.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Fry.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That report is adopted. Next, we have the Transportation and Public Works Report, and that committee is chaired by Councilmember Reich.
Thank you, Madam President. The committee will be forwarding eight items today for approval. One item will be amended, and there's a distribution of that. It's item two. Item one is a nongovernmental tax-exempt parcel street light operation fee assessment, passage resolution, adopting and levying assessments for 2015. Item two is a nongovernmental tax-exempt parcel street maintenance assessment, passage resolution, adopting and levying assessments for 2015. And the amendment has been distributed to remove the property located at 2644 Minnehaha Avenue from the assessment rolls for both items one and two due to the fact that this property is now taxable, see the attachment. Item three is the levy of the 2014 Public Works Department Special Assessments, and approving the levy of the various 2014 Public Works Special Assessments. And four is a special service district advisory board appointments. The various boards and the appointees are listed. Item five is a special service district consulting services, authorize and execution of professional service agreement with Urban Works for special service district consulting for 2015, up to four additional one-year extensions if the work deemed necessary, no additional appropriation required. Item six is the municipal parking rack management system. Requests for proposals will be solicited for professional management and operation municipal parking system for us. Now, kind of referred to as MPLS Parking, it's their new branding title. The next items are referred to the Ways and Means Committee. 2014 is a regional solicitation for federal transportation funds. It's authorization of that submittal. And the commitment of local funds per federal requirement to support the approved projects. Those would be the matching funds that are required by policy. And the following item is two bids, accepting a low bid of PCI Roads LLC to furnish pavement profiling and milling services, and accepting single bid of Cellier Concrete Incorporated to furnish and deliver cellular concrete in Service Water and Sewer Division. And as per the usual practice, when there's a single bid, we refer the pricing to previous years and see if it's consistent with that. With that, Madam President, I move all items as amended with number two.
Councilmember Reich has moved the Transportation and Public Works Report, and items one and two are amended as you notice in front of you. Anyone want to pull anything off or discussion on any of those items? Seeing none, clerk, call the roll.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Fry.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That report is adopted. Next, we have the Ways and Means Report, and that committee is chaired by Councilmember Quincy.
Thank you, Madam President. The Ways and Means will bring forward eight items for your approval today. First is our three legal settlements. The second item is a First Amendment to a professional services agreement with CM Partners for continuation of negotiation skills training program. The next item is the acceptance of a low bid with Premier Electrical Corporation for electrical installation at the Convention Center. The fourth item is the approval of a joint powers agreement on unpaid fees assessment with the City of Minneapolis Edina, St. Anthony, Brooklyn Center, and Golden Valley. The fifth item is the special assessment of delinquent utility charges at the adoption and the adoption of the assessment roll for property tax special assessments. Sixth item is the extension of a contract with ALP for pet licensing, maintenance, and support. Next item is the increase of a contract with Iceberg Technology Group for PeopleSoft System. And the final item is the Meet Minneapolis Contract, authorizing the negotiation and execution of the contract for sales and marketing of the City of Minneapolis and the Minneapolis Convention Center with Meet Minneapolis through 2019. I'd like to move all eight items for approval.
Councilmember Quincy has moved the Ways and Means Report. Anyone want to pull anything off or any discussion on any of those items? Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Madam President. I wanted to comment on item number eight.
Okay, why don't you go ahead?
Thank you, Madam President. Councilmember Quincy has been quite shy about the level of involvement that he's had as one of our leaders on the Meet Minneapolis Board. So today, what we're going to be doing is extending our contract with Meet Minneapolis for a total of five years. This is a major contract. Those of you who follow contracts in the city, Councilmember Johnson being one of them, will know that this is a $10 million-plus contract times five years. We're talking a $50 million contract here to work with Meet Minneapolis to provide convention and visitors' services, as well as marketing the city and selling our convention center. One of the things that's happened over the past six years is we've One of the things that's happened over the past six years as we've moved towards measurable outcomes defined by very specific matrices that talk about what we expect out of this contract, and I think that this contract extends that concept, hones in a little bit better on what we think is important, and speaks to the issue of governance. I really think, in my four-year absence on the board, Councilmember Quincy has done a great job of being a leader in the city on this contract. I know the council president probably thought it was strange she not serve on this board after many, many years of serving, wondering if the rest of us would torment them, but in the end, I think we've done a fairly good job working together to get to the point where this contract is about to be approved today. It is significant. The organization is significant to the city, and we, as watchdogs of the taxpayers' dollars, are making sure that what they do is consistent with our number-one goal, which is selling space in the convention center. It's great that we bring sports, athletic events to the city. It's great that people come sit in theater seats. It's great that hotel rooms are filled, and all of that generates tax base for the city. But the most important thing is that our convention center is filled, and that we don't have to extend the $8 million operating subsidy to it annually, and a very strong contract with Meet Minneapolis will ensure that. So thank you, Councilmember Quincy, for your work without a lot of attention or praise, even comment by you this morning. I very much enjoyed working with you on this board, and your leadership is outstanding.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, I've lost my computer screen. Is anybody in line? Okay, clerk call the roll.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That report is adopted. Next, we have the Zoning and Planning Committee, and that committee is chaired by Councilmember Bender.
Thank you, Madam President. We have five items to forward from the Zoning and Planning Committee. Item number one is to approve an interim use permit application for 2215 Snelling Avenue to allow for a doggy daycare facility there for up to five years. Item number two is to grant an appeal filed by the property owner of 2300 Milwaukee Avenue of one condition of approval from the HPC to allow for a larger side porch and deck. Item number three is to rezone the property at 2812 University Avenue Southeast from C2 to C3A to allow for a hotel. Item number four is approval of an application to vacate a street and sidewalk easement to allow for the Cedar Cultural Center Plaza. And item number five is approval of a street vacation to reconnect 22nd Street East to Cedar Avenue. And I will forward all of those items.
Councilmember Bender has moved the zoning and planning report. Any discussion on any of those items, or want to pull anything off? Seeing none, clerk call the roll.
Aye.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That report is adopted. Next, we have resolutions, and the first is a resolution declaring December 1st, 2014 as World AIDS Day in Minneapolis. We recognize that at the beginning of the council meeting. Any discussion on that resolution? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye. Aye. Opposed, that carries. Next, we have an honorary resolution. We're going to do this at the end of the council meeting, honoring and recognizing Carol Arthur for her extraordinary leadership in addressing domestic violence in the city of Minneapolis. She's retiring, and we're going to have a little ceremony at the end of the council meeting. Any discussion on that resolution? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye. Aye. Opposed, that carries. And next, we have the honorary resolution, which we did at the beginning of the council meeting, declaring the week of November 16th through the 22nd, 2014 as Restorative Justice Week. Any discussion on that resolution? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye. Aye. Opposed, that carries. Next, under motions, Councilmember Quincy moves that the regular payrolls of the city employees under council jurisdiction for the month of December 2014 be approved and ordered paid. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye. Aye. Opposed, that carries. Under unfinished business, we have an ordinance introduction pursuant to notice by Councilmember Frye to introduce at the next regular meeting of the city council the subject matter of an ordinance amending the code relating, for first reading and referral, to the Community Development Committee, amending the interior seating minimum for liquor establishments. Any discussion on that ordinance introduction? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye. Aye. Opposed, that carries. We have then, under new business, an ordinance introduction motion by Councilmember Conno to introduce the subject matter of an ordinance amending the code relating to food, code grocery stores for first writing, reading, and referral to the Health, Energy, and Environment Committee, amending provisions related to requirements. Any discussion on that ordinance introduction? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye. Aye. Opposed, that carries. Announcements are next. Anyone have an announcement this morning? Councilmember Quincy.
Thank you, Madam President. I've got several announcements, so hope we can stay tuned. This weekend, you can shop for local holiday gifts. Bachmann's and Neighborhood Roots will host the Kingfield and Fulton Holiday Farmers Market at Bachmann's at 6,000 Block of Lyndale Avenue South. It'll be open this weekend from 9:00 to 1:30. The second item really relates to something that was in our email boxes, and you'll be seeing some communications. The city was notified that the three major rating agencies, Fitch Ratings, Moody Investor Services, and Standard and Poor's Rating Services, and the city continues to maintain among the highest possible bond ratings for the upcoming issuance of our GEO Improvement Bonds and GEO Various Purpose Bonds next week. These highest bond ratings that we've achieved just really provide great testament to our financial management and prudence and oversight of our finance department. So I'd like to recognize and thank them for their work to make sure that the city is in great shape. Then the third item really relates to all the things that we've done recently in the Ways and Means and our budget subcommittee. We've completed 27 of our department budget hearings, and moving on to the next phase of our budget approval process is the truth and taxation statements that are out in the mail now. We have a, our public hearing opportunity, public comment period for Tuesday, November 18th, and because of the timing between the receipt of the truth and taxation statements as well as the tight timeframe for a public comment period, we've done something rather innovative as a response to making sure we're hearing from as many people as we can and providing that opportunity. So with the thanks of the city clerks' department and our communications department, we're establishing an online public comment form that will be hosted on our city's webpage, and you'll be provided a link to that, and we're also coordinating with 311. So comment will be open. Forms will be submitted. Prior to December 1st, will be entered into the public record and delivered, of course, to our council members and Mayor Hodges. So I just wanted to give a highlight of that rather innovative way to get public comment on our budget as we move forward in that process.
Thank you, Councilmember Quincy. Councilmember Yang.
Thank you, Madam President. Quickly, tomorrow at noon at Hopkins High School, North High Polers are playing Dawson Boyd, and they're, they're in states. I mean, they're one game away from the state championship game, and I just wanted to encourage folks, if you want to freeze, please come and join us tomorrow. Thank you.
Councilmember Frye.
Thank you, Madam President. As many of you know, there is a landmark sign that's just off of the Hennepin Avenue Bridge on Nicollet Island next to De La Salle, and it's the Green Belt Sign. That sign has been unlit for, I don't know, probably a decade or two at this point, maybe a few decades, Council President. And for the very first time in those decades, that sign will likely be relit. So I want to publicly thank Shell's Brewing Company for their pseudo-commitment at this point to fund the lights and the continued maintenance for the, for many, many, many years to come. Thank you, Shell's.
Any other announcements? Seeing none, a motion to adjourn would be in order, and it's a motion to adjourn to 3:15 City Hall after we recognize Carol Arthur for the purpose of discussing two legal matters. Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in approval, say aye. Aye. Opposed, that carries. We are adjourned, and we'll go recognize Ms. Arthur. And I, okay.
Thank you very much for joining us this morning, and we're delighted to recognize Carol Arthur, who's been a fantastic partner in our city for many, many years in a area that is involved in so much of the criminal justice work that we do as a city. So I'm going to give the microphone to Susan Siegel, and perhaps you can begin, and then I'll read the resolution, and then we'll go from there.
Okay, well, we couldn't let this occasion pass without recognizing just the exceptional leadership, contributions, sacrifices made by this incredible woman in the cause of victims of domestic violence, all the programming that you've started over the years, your extraordinary leadership of the Domestic Abuse Project, and the incredible work you've done here in the city of Minneapolis. You've just been an amazing partner. I've got Michelle Jacobson here with me, who's the head of our domestic violence team. You have been the brains behind so many initiatives that we have worked on here in the city and the improvements that we've made, both with our prosecution efforts and the police department, law enforcement, et cetera, with many successful Federal Violence Against Women Act grant applications and initiatives, and I just can't thank you enough. You've been a huge friend, and we are personally going to miss you, but I know your grandchildren will be quite happy to have more time with you, so thank you.
Well, I'm going to read the resolution, and then Deputy Chief Arneson has something also. So the resolution today recognizes Carol Arthur for her extraordinary leadership in addressing domestic violence in the city of Minneapolis. Whereas in May 1988, an event of profound significance occurred in the city of Minneapolis when Carol Arthur was appointed Executive Director of the Domestic Abuse Project, and whereas Carol Arthur has served as Executive Director of the Domestic Abuse Project for 22 of the 35 years the organization has been in existence, and whereas Carol Arthur has announced that she will be retiring at the end of this year. Whereas Carol Arthur has been an invaluable partner in the city attorney's office and the Minneapolis Police Department in improving the city's response to domestic violence, helping design the Minneapolis model, an evidence-based, victim-focused approach to our law enforcement and prosecution efforts. And whereas with the support and guidance of Carol Arthur, the city attorney's office has increased its conviction rate by 50% and has been cited as a successful example to be followed in a study conducted by WATCH. Whereas Carol Arthur has developed a collaboration with Asian Women United of Minnesota and Casa de Esperanza to provide culturally appropriate advocacy services, which services are provided to Minneapolis victims with advocates available in City Hall and in the courts. And whereas under Carol Arthur's leadership, the Domestic Abuse Project has provided advocacy to over 62,000 victims of domestic assault, helping them understand their options within the justice system, connecting them to community resources, and offering a sympathetic ear and emotional support, helped over 10,000 men to eliminate abusive behaviors and build healthy relationships, helped over 4,000 women to heal from the effects of abuse and plan to keep themselves and their children safe, helped over 1,500 youth understand that the violence that they have witnessed is not their fault and that abuse is not okay, provided training to over 30,000 professional and community members, implemented and sustained a partnership with Little Earth of United Tribes and with North Point in North Minneapolis through which Domestic Abuse Project provides onsite advocacy services at Little Earth and North Point, giving community members direct access to advocacy within their communities, developed Change Step, an innovative program to help military service members and veterans eliminate abusive behaviors and build healthy relationships that has been implemented by the United States Air Force at all of its 75 bases worldwide, and successfully collaborated with all components of the justice system and been recognized by the National Council of Juvenile and Family Court Judges for its work with child witnesses of domestic abuse, and published six practice manuals that educated over 30,000 professional and community members on the issue of domestic violence. Whereas Carol Arthur has always been a ready and willing partner, sharing her knowledge and wisdom with city partners, and without hesitation, signing on to assist us in developing new initiatives and approaches to improve our response to domestic violence. Whereas Carol Arthur has moved forward the cause of preventing and responding to domestic violence, not only in this city, but on a regional, state, and national level, all through her strength of leadership, grace under pressure, concern for victims, for children, and for abusers who are willing to embrace change. And whereas the city council wishes to recognize Carol Arthur for her exceptional contributions and career, now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Minneapolis that the city council expresses its deep gratitude and appreciation to Carol Arthur for her many years of dedicated service to the Domestic Abuse Project and partnership with the city of Minneapolis, and in particular, the Minneapolis City Attorney's Office and the Minneapolis Police Department. And I'm turning this over now to Deputy Chief Arneson.
Thank you, Madam President, and I just cannot top that, Carol, so I'm not even going to try, but I want to thank you personally from myself and the Minneapolis Police Department for not only helping victims, and I'm talking the men, the women, and the children in these families, but also helping the Minneapolis Police Department and my officers understand domestic violence and what that means, and how to help victims and the children, and you know, of course, all of our great partnerships that we have together that, you know, we've helped, really, I think, really helped the citizens of Minneapolis. So I thank you from the bottom of my heart for that. I also have, the chief could not be here today for this, but I have a chief's award of merit presented to Carol Arthur, and grateful acknowledgement of your outstanding contribution to law enforcement and the people we serve, and presented by Chief Janay Harto. Thank you so much.
Carol, you want to say a few words?
I do, and as the council knows, me saying a few words is probably not possible. First of all, thank you so much for this honor and recognition. It is so appreciated. When the people you work most closely with honor you, that's a big deal because they know you best, and they've seen you at your best and your worst. So again, thank you so much for this recognition and honor. I want to thank this city, the city council, the city attorney's office, the police department. As all of you know, no one ever does this kind of work alone. You never accomplish at this level alone. It takes the partnership, and I want to acknowledge what this city has done as a leader in the field of domestic violence, not only in the state of Minnesota, but nationally. You are a leader in the field of domestic violence. There is probable cause arrest in cases of domestic violence because of this city and the work of the Sherman and Burke Research Study called the Minneapolis Experiment way back in the late '70s. This city took the leap of doing that research, and because of that, our nation has probable cause arrest for domestic violence because of the work here in Minneapolis. We were designated as a nationally replicated model by the National Council of Juvenile and Family Court Judges, and we've had that designation for a number of years. So this city has been working on this issue a number of years and made great strides, as you know from the reports from your city attorney's office, police department, and advocacy group. And as our city has changed, our approaches have changed so that we reach out to all members of our community so that they can participate in safe communities and safe homes. And I am so grateful to the city leadership for what you have done, and I thank you.
We thank you? We are adjourned? Thank you.
Thank you. [applause][1764.26]